Okay, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order if y'all ready. We've got a pretty long agenda, so we'll get, go through things as quick as possible if we can, but we'll also take as much time necessary on each item. So we'll go ahead and just welcome everyone to come tonight. We certainly appreciate you being here. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and then Ed Howes is gonna have the indications. Let's have a pledge of allegiance.
I'll wait for that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this day and thank you for the people brought together tonight. We pray that you would bless this city, pray that you bless its councils that make decisions, and we pray that it be harmonious, that they would be able to come together and make decisions that benefit the city and that we would all come together and unite. Father, we just pray that you forgive our sins. Christ, every prayer.
All right then. First item is a recommendation to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a motion to approve those meetings? I might have motioned. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye. Second item, item is a recommendation to approve our accounts of payable bills. Is there a motion to approve them too? Okay Francis, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, will you? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Reed, Cavanagh, I'm just gonna let you go ahead and give your update and your recommendation for what you came here tonight for. We know several months ago, we talked to you about refinancing 2007 bond and we did that and it turns out we saved a lot more money than what you originally thought. So if you would, just give us your update and your recommendation so we can take care of this tonight.
Well, thank you for letting me be here and I wanna say first off, I love these new chairs.
Last time you were here, we had benches.
You had benches. I remember, first time I came in this room was about 20 years ago, when I worked for Senator Shelby and he'd have these town hall meetings in here. And I remember, always remember those church pews. And so I came in tonight and saw these and I was really impressed, I think. Maybe, I hope y'all used some of the savings off the bond issue to pay for some of this, I don't know, but I think it's...
Probably hard money.
Yeah, yeah. Y'all probably just had cash, but anyway, this is a great job. I like these seats. But anyway, again, thank you for letting us work with you on this. Last time we were here and y'all approved us moving forward on this refinancing, the estimate was about $200,000 in savings. Caught the market on a great day, savings $275,000. So you got $75,000 more than what we were anticipating. We hit a historic low in the bond market right around when we were selling your financing, so everything just worked out perfectly. As you may know, Merchant Capital was bought by a company called Stiefel out of St. Louis. We're part of a publicly traded company. We're now the number one underwriter of municipal bonds in the country. And the city of Hamilton's bond issue was the first bond issue done by Stiefel under the new merger with Merchant Capital. So we were happy about that and appreciated the opportunity to work with you. But everything turned out great. I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, we didn't extend the payoff date, kept the payoff date the same as it was. We just lowered the interest rate and lowered the payments and saved an extra $75,000 over what we had anticipated. So rate dropped from about 4% down to about 2.35 on about $3.3 million worth of debt. So that's a, that's a, that's a good drop in your rate. So just got the resolution here tonight and pass that and we'll have everything closed here, I believe, on Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, we signed most of the documents.
Yes.
Thank you, Rod, Jim Kane.
Dale did a good job. Jan has been very, very helpful along with Scott. Y'all've got a great team here. They have to pull together a lot of information and they're just such a pleasure to work with. Dale and Scott and Alan and Jan, just the whole team. Y'all've got a good bunch up here, so.
So what do you need?
Just need that.
We need the immediate consideration.
Yeah.
And then approve the ordinance.
Yep, that's right.
And in order to do the immediate consideration, I think Adam was concerned, correct Jim? Okay. Is there a motion for immediate consideration on ordinance number 2015-3?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, will you? Is there a second?
Second.
Good. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, now to approve the ordinance number 2015-3, is there a motion to approve this ordinance? Okay Francis, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Okay, Reed, too?
That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Captain.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Good news.
Yep, yep. Congratulations to y'all. Again, your credit rating helped out a lot and that's because y'all are running the city so well, so keep that up and we hope to see y'all soon.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Let's leave it for it. Next item, Jim, is a recommendation to approve and pay any and all expenses related to the design and construction of the East Hamilton Fire Station out of 2014 Acquisition Fund. As we begin in this with Emily's design, we've already approved, or not approved, we approved hiring her, but you know, she puts stuff together, we'll be getting bills on that. And then when we are able to start our construction on that, we just need to make it official. All expenses will be out of that, out of the bond, not our original fund or anything else. That's basically what this is, is just saying all money spent on this project will be out of the bond. Is that correct, Jim?
Correct.
It's for, for the record, so when we get an invoice or something, we'll know what account's there out of. So is there a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion.
Okay Francis, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, will you? Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Number seven, I think you got a copy here in the... This is a recommendation to approve, resolution number 2015-22 to Excel, April Machining Company's low bid of $749,805. This is for water and sewer relocation for Aldi, that's south of town, relocating water and sewer. Rod, you can explain this. We had some bid openings Friday with Goodwood Mills and Cablewood, this company that got the low bid. We'll be doing the work, but this is all gonna be Aldi approval. And it's not costing the city. I mean, it's, well, once this project starts, we'll get reimbursed. So Rod, you can explain that for us if you have to.
This is a state mandated project on 43 South, past the Church of Christ down here on Highway 35, County Road 35. That'll be relocating water and sewer lines down through there. Of course, like I said, the state will reimburse everything we pay on it.
Same as we did on the other projects, is that correct?
Same thing we did on 278.
Same as we did on 278's project.
You're just, oh, the difference in the six inch line to the eight inch.
Yeah.
The job voted.
We voted on that. And then the interest that cost us the money.
Right.
Having to borrow and do that, so. And this is all, I'd say, this is, these be done with the sauce opening and Aldi approval. So if they approve the low bid, we already have everything, paperwork needed for this project to be bid out. So is there a recommendation to approve this resolution?
I'll make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much.
Jan, did I pay that back then one month's notice?
We did drawdown. We did drawdowns. You know, when we have an invoice signed and then I draw it down on that loan to the bank and then I have to wait until the check clears the bank, I have to have a copy from the bank statement.
That's right.
And then it does take a little while, you know, with the state to get the money back. If you eventually do get it.
Yeah, it's a great project. It just completed by all the cost of interest to do it, to do it from drawdown, plus we pay an extra to get eight inch over the six inch line. Okay. Yeah, where this Mr. Jones from Air Evac, Paramedic Care Network, and he saw me probably two, three weeks ago by our proposal for Air Evac for the city or possibly our employees. And he's done these proposals in different cities. I know he went to Bay on other towns. So if you would, let's come talk to him about your proposal and let the council take a look at it.
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And I hope that what, you know, we put together is beneficial for each resident here. Now, what we had put together, Mayor, if you remember, was what we call an MSP, Municipal Site Plan. And what that is to do is to cover every resident, every man, woman, and child in the city limits of Hamilton. And that proposal, if we can pull it together before March, is $21,855. And that covers every man, woman, and child in the city limits. And what I mean by that is if anything happens within the confines of the city limits or any of those residents happen to be out in the county someplace and have to be airlifted, they're covered out there. Now, if the city takes on this project, then any of the people within the city limits that already have full memberships, what I mean by a full membership, you can be in Florida, Texas, California, wherever you happen to be, and we fly you, we'll allow you to have a full membership for $35 as opposed to $65. And that goes in with, you know, hand in glove with the proposal that we're giving the city. Now, I just ran a few numbers this afternoon because I didn't have this until earlier, but you have 6,629 people in the city limits. I think that's what we got today, is that correct, Mayor?
That's according to the...
The census there?
The census that Amy had, yes, sir.
Okay. And so by taking that 6,000 people and extending it out, that's roughly $3.30 a head to have air service for them in that event. Last year, we made 60-plus flights, almost 70 flights. And then just to show you what it could've been, and I don't have these numbers at all other than the fact that, let's take those 70 flights that we made out of here, out of Marion County, and say no one had a membership. Now, some of those folks that we flew did have memberships, I just don't know the number of who we flew that had. But out of 70 flights, the average flight's about $30,000, $25 to $30,000, some of them maybe a little more, $33,000, $34,000. So in saying that, let's say that they didn't have memberships, that would've been $2,100,000 that was taken out of Marion County. Now, understand, without memberships, they're making payments, most of these residents and people that we airlift are making payments to West Plains, Missouri. My job is to keep every dollar I can in, you know, the state of Alabama, especially in Marion County. That's what we're dealing with right now. So by us proposing this MSP plan, had, had every one of those folks that we flew last year had a membership, there's a big difference here. Out of that, and let's say each one had a, an average of $55 a membership, that would've been $3,850 worth of flight bills. Big difference between 2.1 million and $3,850. So that's why we are making these proposals to Hamilton, Fayette, Winfield, all of the municipalities that I'm responsible for. Because there is no sense in our communities paying out extra dollars when there is an alternative. And just like the gentleman said here, you guys saving money in your bond issues, well, I'm not selling bonds, but I am trying to protect the people and the citizenry of my counties. And that's what this proposal's all about. Now, we, out of that 6,629 people, I took liberty with that number today and said, okay, let's say that there is four people to the household, and I divided that for families. So you've got roughly 1,657 families with the average of four people to the family, I said. Well, by doing that, the average family cost for this MSP would be $13.20 to cover the entire household. Now, you know, that seems to me to be a wonderful deal, you know, and to cover the citizenry of Hamilton. You know, we could all go over these numbers time and time again. I've got numbers here for the entire county. So, but if you would take the city of Hamilton out of the county numbers, which the county would be responsible for that, the city would be responsible for its membership. And that way, we have the abilities to cover every man, woman, and child in an entire county at very, very nominal prices. Basically, I can cover every man, woman, and child in Marion County for the price of two and a half flights. Two and a half flights without membership, when you're saying the average flight's roughly, you know, $30,000. So that way, you're keeping all the money in the county. And that's, that's what we wanna do, is keep it in the county, to make them, let people have the money to spend, you know, in the city, in the county. Is there any questions that I can answer for any of you guys now?
Is this a on-ballin', or did you say that was like a...
Well, there is a time limit on us having this in place for the year. We were able to get these numbers lowered considerably, but I have to have all the paperwork done and in place with corporate by the first of March. Yes, ma'am. And yes, ma'am, it will be an ongoing year after year kind of expenditure. But, you know, we make, just like the state trooper that was out here a month or so ago, we had two helicopters at that scene. We have four total helicopters in North Alabama. We have roughly 600 helicopters in the southeast. So we have, we have helos from coast to coast, and regardless of where the people happen to be, if they have the full memberships, they're flown at no additional charge to them.
Tell us just for the sake of the public about who mans these helicopters.
We have four teams of three at each airbase. Obviously a pilot, a RN, and a paramedic. The RNs that are on our flights have to have a minimum of five years ER experience. So a lot of them have been in ORs, some of them have been right there, you know, doing what the doctors do, but they have to have a minimum of five years. So you've got qualified personnel, and each base, like I said, has a team of three, there's four teams per base. So we man that base 24/7, 365 days a year.
So would you mind naming the closest bases around here?
The two, two closest bases would be Fayette and Los Angeles.
There's a possibility moving one here.
You'd have to talk to corporate about that. But, you know, we're a directional flight company, so to speak. We place our helos in rural areas to whereas if we are dispatched, we're already heading toward a major trauma unit. That's the reason that we have them, you know, positioned in rural areas. You don't find any of Air Evac's helicopters in major cities, because 99 times out of 100, they're gonna be ambulanced, you know, to that facility. But it's the rural counties, the rural cities, and the people out here that they are helped the most. And as time goes on, and I say this sort of tongue-in-cheek, but I think you'll know where I'm coming from, with our medical situations in America as it is today, you know, these prices are good today, and that's the reason we're trying to get into them as quickly as we can. Because there are regulations and things that come down every single month that dictate us how we, you know, do things from our government. So anytime that we can, you know, latch on to something that's beneficial to us, we try to do it very quickly.
Now, is this membership that we did something in our city, is that full membership or...
It is full membership while they're in the city and while...
So if they haven't Air Evac necessarily outside of city limits or outside of Marion County or what?
If they're, if they're in Marion County, it covers them. If they're outside of Marion County, that does not. That's the reason I said a while ago that we would offer a full membership to anyone that we wanted, $35, but that would come out of the citizenry.
Is that a month or a year?
That's a year.
A year.
Yes, sir.
$35 a year?
Yes, sir.
Per person or per family?
Per family, per household.
But is that the, the PPD just for the city, just if it just be for inside city limits?
That's correct, sir. That quote that I gave you is just for the city limits of Hamilton.
What'd you say about the county, what was out here?
If, if, if a city personnel was out in the county, has a ring, heart attack, whatever, as long as they're in Marion County, they're covered under the, under the proposal that we give the city.
Well, I thought you said, go ahead. Now, let's go back. If, what about just our city employees, like, we have like 65, 70 employees. Did you, did you have that in your plan?
No, sir, I didn't.
Cause I knew we talked about that. I didn't know if that was in your proposal.
I can, I can give the full citizenry, I mean, the impact of the city, full memberships for $55 a household, under the city employee, you know, mandate. So...
Are some cities doing this?
Oh, yes, sir. Now, all the cities, I won't say all, that's not correct, most cities have their employees and, you know, the city staffs and things like that on Air Evac. That covers, you know...
Now, if they would be full, no matter where they would be?
They would be full.
And even if they're living in Alabama, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
So if we did just for city employees and they needed an Air Evac, it wouldn't matter where they was?
That's correct, sir.
For $55 per employee?
That's right.
That's about $55 per, per household?
Per household, yeah. Did I say it per employee?
I said it, it's per household.
It's per household, sir.
So you gotta know what more to worry.
Yes, sir. I have to have all of my paperwork and I would like to know a few days before that so I can get to corporate, they have to draw this, you know, the agreement and everything and get it back to us.
Is that next week, 16, 17? It's 17. Would be two weeks from tonight, but since it's a holiday, we're gonna meet on that Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
That's the reason I wanted you to come tonight, to give our council a chance to kind of sort this, this is the first time they've met you maybe or, you know, you haven't talked to us as a group, you talked to me, but I didn't feel like it'd be fair to, you know, try to vote on something like without them having a chance to look at it. Is y'all, is there anything else y'all can send us?
Y'all transport from here to, y'all do transports too?
Yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir. For instance, like the jump, the state trooper out here and the lady that was injured, we flew one of them to Tubalow and one to Birmingham.
Well, you do it for the hospital too, don't you?
Yes, sir, we do.
Is this not if the patients, tell us where they're flown?
If they're conscious.
Pardon?
If they're conscious.
Yes, well, of course, yes.
You know, but see, whenever, whenever we get up out there, they have to contact a local hospital and see if they are receiving patients. And, you know, a lot of times, most of the time UAV's receiving, Huntsville receives Tubalow, but we have to contact and find out if they're receiving patients. And we have been turned away from hospitals because of an overload of patients. But most of the time, they'll go to UAV. Let's say that they're brought into here, into the Hamilton Hospital, but they're gonna stabilize there and if there's something that needs to be, you know, taken quickly, well, obviously we'll take them home to Birmingham or wherever the local hospital that receives.
That would be extra on the patient.
No, ma'am, it will not. I like to use the example, let's say that, you know, they're out in the county, north side of the county someplace and, and we fly to, you know, we pick them up and we fly to Huntsville. Huntsville gets them up there, gets them stabilized, but says there's more trauma than what they're, you know, able to take care of, then we fly them to Birmingham. In essence, that's roughly a $65,000 to a $70,000 flight for two airlifts. If they have memberships all there out of pocket, it's that $65 or $55, you know, for the membership, that's it. So it's a win-win.
How would your company know if somebody lived in the city limits or not, you know, if they had an accident? Is that a question you ask before they come pick you up or how do you determine that?
Well, number one, every, every person, and once this is passed through the city, we'll actually come in and help you do your promotion, we'll help you do all the ads and everything like that to notify. But everyone would receive, obviously, the typical stickers that we use on the cars. Every person...
There were households in the city limits?
That's correct, sir. And everyone would receive identification cards to keep in their wallets, to whereas, and keep in mind, if, if they're not able to tell us they're an Air Evac, it doesn't matter. We're gonna fly them with a membership or without a membership. But once everything's setting done, well, they find out that they're an Air Evac membership and they won't even receive a bill. But let's say they do receive a bill. Once they find out that you're a member and use your household ID or your city ID, whatever it happens to be, and that bill will be dissolved. So either way, they're, they won't be billed for transportation.
Have you met with any other cities in Marion County besides those in Winfield?
Uh, no.
About the Marion County Commission, remember?
No, sir, I haven't. Most of the time, we have to get the blessings of the city first and then go from there, but...
Do you understand that, that if you dissipate this and you use it, that you, they'll, my guess would be Medicare, blue cross, and you get what you can get out of them because they will pay something toward it, but then the rest of it is absorbed by the company if in fact you are a member?
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
We do, you know...
We do file if a person does have insurance.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
But if they don't have insurance, the $65 or $55 or whatever, that still covers them? Are you not out?
As long as you remember, you're never out any more money, sure, sir. I can give you a prime example in, in the lady down at Moore Oil down in Winfield. I was in down there, signed up all three employees of Moore Oil one day, and she said, let me just hold off a little bit. One month from the day that I was in there, her husband had to be flown for a stroke. Her bill was $33,000. Her insurance only picked up six of that. So, you know, now she's got to face, you know, the rest of that. And our company is great, they'll work with people, you know, any way they possibly can, but it's just like anything else that is a business. And we, but we try to tell you upfront, you can forego any of the headaches and problems with a cheap... membership.
What I gather from this, pardon me for saying this, but this is too important, you're coming anyway. If we get in an accident, you're coming, and they call you, y'all are coming anyway, it's a matter of do we get a discount toward this or not? But you're coming.
I'm coming.
What about those that's already paid memberships that's inside the city limits? How does that work?
Okay, those that have already paid, just like I said earlier, once their renewal date comes up, then, you know, the city will still cover what they cover. Then we will offer them a full membership for the thirty-five dollars.
They would just have a cheaper full membership?
That's correct.
That would cover them anywhere, like it is now, just cheaper?
That's right.
What'd you say the number was? Our cost would be?
Well.
Twenty-one thousand eight fifty-five, I think, is what it's.
A hard number?
That's a hard number.
That's based on the census?
That's correct, sir. Based on your census.
That's a year.
A year.
And it covers everybody?
Everybody.
Everybody in town?
In the city limits.
In city limits. And you can actually, and I would if I was in your position, as soon as this goes through, I would start putting in my documents that anyone that moves into the city limits would have that coverage, because it could be a drawing card for people to move into the Hamilton area and have, you know, basically zero cost in air flights if they had to use us.
Mayor asked you if you'd had any county here or anybody, is anybody, municipalities or counties signed up this in your area?
Not yet. We have, right now, we're about three hundred plus municipalities across America. We rolled this out June the first, I think it was, and we've had about that many, three hundred plus, to sign up across the United States.
This would just be a one-year contract, and if they wanted to go with it, then after a year, decide we couldn't get out, right?
That's correct, sir.
When does it go from, when you sign up like in Lawrence to following Lawrence?
That's correct, sir. Date-to-date.
Y'all need him to sign standing in there for the next few days, thank you, bye.
It'll be fine.
And can you figure the impound?
Well, that'd be covered too, if we done it for everybody.
If you do it for everybody, well, there again, it's kind of like one of my other municipalities, a lot of the, Huckleburg, for instance, not Huckleburg, but Hailville, we've got the same proposal, but a lot of their city employees live outside the county, and they live, you know, up.
Yeah, it's close to Ben County line there.
That's right. So a lot of those folks there do not live inside the city limits. But there again, we can get creative with those people that live outside just the same way as we can with those that, you know, live inside. But like, you know, the proposal I have before you guys right now is just for the city limits. But I will more than happily, you know, sit down with all of you, each one of you individually if I need to, and show you, you know, every direction that we can possibly go.
I'll send you each council member's contact number if you want to, if y'all want to talk with them individually, that's fine.
Please. And my telephone number is on.
Where y'all can call him?
The front of that brochure that you have there.
Yes, sir.
And you can contact me there or not.
Are you based in Fayette?
I am responsible for Fayette and Coleman bases. I live in Trosswell, Alabama, but I cover everything from Jefferson County north, and so I never know. Anything else, ma'am?
No, sir. Unless they have some questions for you.
Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. Appreciate that proposal. We'll take a look at that.
Thank you for your time, please.
Yes, sir. Thanks for being here. Next, we have Mr. Michael Hughes, he's got a proposal for GIS, and we've met with him a couple of weeks ago with all the department heads, I think Leon was here, some county officials, and Michael, I'm just going to let you explain what you showed me a couple of weeks ago, so the council can be on board with what you're going to do.
Thank you all for the opportunity to come and talk to me. First of all, it'd be okay if I sat down, shared a little dig at the sand and give the slides to you. My name is Michael Hughes, I'm the GIS manager for Franklin County GIS Consortium. I put together about a twenty, twenty-two slide presentation, and I was told I had five to ten minutes, so if I get a little too long-winded, just throw something at me. The Franklin County GIS Consortium was formed around 2007 by David Palmer, county engineer, and we've grown to a group of over twelve government agencies and over twenty departments who participate in this group. I can give you a dissertation of what GIS is, but I think the best thing to do would be just to show you how you can use it, and that'll paint a pretty clear picture. So let's jump right into economic development. I'm going to breeze through these slides, but if you have any questions, please feel free to jump in anytime. Economic development, one of the big uses of GIS is to develop web applications, similar to Google Maps, that allow you to display and showcase your potential industrial size. So for example, we can pick out all of your industrial parks, any property that may be suitable for industry or business, and we can document all of the information about that site. For example, how many gallons of water per day are accessible at that area, how many kilovolts of electricity, what's the traffic count, what's the type of other transportation assets in that area, how many square feet is the property, excuse me, the structure, what is the zoning? So we put all of this information into this system, we display it on a map. We also can associate any pictures or videos for plans that you want, and agencies inside the city can then start to ask questions of the system. We have a potential industry that wants to come in, they need this many squared feet, they need this many acres, they need these types of utilities, and in just a matter of seconds, it can tell you every parcel, property parcel that meets that criteria. And if you wish, you can make this public, you can put this on a public web app so that potential industry in Canada or on the other side of the world can do the same things. We can put that on our website. That's right, you can. Here's an example, and this site does exactly the same thing. Over on the left side, you can set your criteria, and then the map displays those sites that meet that criteria, and then you can probably barely see down at the bottom, you see some of that information that I was talking about. Jumping on, let's talk about hazards, hazard and disaster planning and response. So the bottom line here is that, first of all, you collect all of your information about your critical facilities. Where are the daycares, where are the hospitals, nursing homes, other various critical facilities? Where is hazardous material storage? Do we have chlorine tanks? Do we have oxygen tanks and other types of hazardous materials? Tornado came through Franklin County, one thing that we noticed right off the bat, where there used to be homes, there's now slabs of concrete, two things shooting up into the air, natural gas and water. So it's important to know where those assets are so that you can shut them off quickly. Once all this information is gathered, then you start to create plans. We plan for these disasters and these events, whether it's a F-five tornado or a missing child, you can use this information. And then, in the unfortunate event of one of these incidents, we use this information to help in the recovery. Also, fire in the balance. Let me jump out of this for a second, I'll show you an application that I've been talking to Mr. McCracken about, he can jump in here if he wants. But here's one of the apps that I'm talking about. This is just sample data that I created for Bell Green School up in Franklin County. So you can start to get an idea of what we're talking about here. Just a second, I'll show you some of this information. Oh, I don't have an internet connection. Ah, darn it. Let's see. Is this a secure connection? Okay, I think I'm on. So what this application does, hopefully, there we go, maybe this will come up, if not, what this will show you is at any school, any other facility, we can show where hazardous material is stored, we can show fire hydrants, what's the gallons permitted out of the fire hydrant, we can show, here's a list of some of the things that we can put on the map. Where would be a good place to put the hazmat, fire engine? Where are control panels located? Where do we shut off the natural gas? Where do we shut off the electricity? So forth. Where are the doors? Are they double doors, single doors? Are they open to the inside, to the outside? We can even shoot video inside and have a link to that video on the outside, so you can click on the little video camera here and it'll show you that information. So let's go back to the slideshow. And here's an example of what we've built in Franklin County, showing some of our information that we used in the recovery of Bill Campbell. Transportation, capital investment planning, cost estimation, asset inventory, we gather all of this information, then we put it to work. And then we put it in the hands of those people who are doing the work, so that they can use an iPad or a smartphone to see work order information and job histories. We use all of this information for better decision-making. We take into account information such as the number of residences on a street, what is the traffic count, the roadway condition, and then you can start to prioritize what roads need work the most. Utilities, some of the same stuff, you know, one of the big things is take all the information out there, and you do have some information, I think the water and sewer system already has some data in the format that we use, so that we can take that information, we can put it in an iPad, we can put it in a web application, so that it's easier for your folks to use. Public safety, similar high points to the hazard planning, DMA. Another thing here is inventory, private and public storm shelters. In Franklin County, we're inventorying anyone's private storm shelter that wants it inventoried, and then after a tornado, we can overlay the tornado's path on top of all of those shelters. Then we can start to go see if maybe anyone's trapped by an oak tree falling on top of that storm shelter. For E-911, we're already working with Marion County E-911, they're part of our group, they joined about a year or two ago, and we've helped them with some of these issues and several others. Community planning, you can better manage your zoning, land use, any building permitting, building inspection. You can use it for planning support, so that you can do some of these tasks here, like identify trends or problems, create a master plan, downtown revitalization, and you can use this data that's stored in the GIS to help you get grant money. Citizen engagement. So some of the things that we're working on are creating web apps, again, similar to Google Maps, where we put all of our recreation onto the map. This is also big for economic development, so where you have parks, the rec center over here, ball fields, whatever, we can put those on the map. A user can type in their address and figure out which is the closest one of these facilities. We can put contact information, for example, for the rec center, you can sort of get the idea here. Election information, so, you know, we can post voting polling locations, show the outlines, the boundaries of the voting proceedings, and manage redistricting projects. That's been a real big deal up in Franklin County with the congressional realignments. You can also show where you have roadwork or any other construction projects, to show people what they might want to avoid or go slowly. So how do you do all these things? Well, we can help you. We'll help you gather this information, a lot of it's already available, county has information, you have information here in the city. The problem is, it's in isolated little islands all over the place. After the tornado in 2011, we helped some of the Marion County agencies, and we had to go from office to office in the courthouse, no one knew what the other offices had, we had to go all over town, trying to track down some of this information. So working as a group, being part of a larger group, lets us take all the information from all these agencies and put it in one database so that it's easily accessible by everyone. We'll help you share this data with everyone via iPad apps or desktop computer programs and websites, and I'll be here to help you with any projects that you have. For example, a few weeks ago, Mr. McCracken and I worked on a project where we calculated drive times from a potential fire station. That's something that maybe you might not want to take on by yourself, but it takes me five minutes to do, very expensive, complicated software. So why, so some of the other benefits of working as a group, multiple agencies, is because, bottom line, it saves money. We can capitalize on the economy of scale. This is a pretty lengthy little paragraph here, but basically, you know, it's sort of an idealistic outlook, you just have the opportunity to work with other agencies in your community who are trying to accomplish the same things you're trying to accomplish, and we learn from each other. So in other words, we don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel, you can learn from our So why is a fellow from Franklin County coming down to an agency in Marion County and encouraging you to be part of our group? Well, we've experienced what GIS can do for us. We believe in the technology, I'm a proponent of it, I've been doing this for thirteen years, and I just think that everyone can benefit from it. It up until recently, and even still, really, this is a technology that's used mostly by larger agencies. The city of Madison, the city of Huntsville, Shelby County does GIS, Mobile and Montgomery. Franklin County really has a unique situation going on. We're really the only rural area that's doing some of the things that we're doing, and the only way that we're able to do it is because all of these agencies work together and cooperate, we share data with each other, and we all pay in a little bit every month into a bank account. This bank account has grown, and we're able to purchase a lot of things that we wouldn't otherwise be able to. So what we want to do in the short term, we'll help you grow your GIS, and in turn, the city of Hamilton will pay five hundred dollars a month if you decide to be a part of the group. This is comparable to what other agencies your sides are paying. The city of Russellville, the town of Red Bay, and about three or four other agencies in Franklin County are paying the same amount. And you'll have a voting membership, we make quarterly, and your representatives will be able to attend meetings and help make decisions. Longer term, though, what we would like to see is more agencies in Marion County realize the benefits of GIS. And then you form your own consortium, do the same things that we have done, form your own group. Don't necessarily completely disassociate yourself from Franklin County, we can still work as a regional group, but pay that money, that five hundred dollars, pay that into a Marion County bank account and grow Marion County's GIS group. I know I'm running short on time here.
No.
I'm sorry. So what do you do now? You decide, first of all, mull it over, think about it, do you want to be part of this group? And if you do, we'll vote at the next meeting, which I think we're going to have on next month, and on your membership, this is merely a formality, I don't think anyone's going to disagree. And then you sign what we call a memorandum of understanding, and I think you all have a copy of this. This is not a contractual agreement, this is just an understanding that you're part of this group as long as you want to be, and when you want to get out, you can get out. No one's going to hold you to a year or two years' membership. So this just says that you'll share your information with us, we don't want any sensitive data, we don't want to know what water meters are going to be cut off this month, we don't want to know any personal information. This just says that the general information will be shared with the group. And then, if you sign that memorandum of understanding, you become part of the group. I'll get started right away, working with your departments and working with your employees, helping develop the GIS. Phew, I'm out of breath.
Good job.
I've never done it that quick. All right, so.
You ready for questions?
I'm ready, I hope, lay it on me.
This is, this is, we're in Franklin County.
I'm sorry?
This is through Franklin County Highway.
Franklin County Highway Department, we have to have a lead agency. David Palmer was the lead dog in this thing back in 2007, he's county engineer, so Franklin County Highway Department is the lead agency of the consortium. We have, like I said, we have two members in Marion County right now, we have Marion County 911 and the Huckleburg Water and Sewer Department. So it's called Franklin County GIS Consortium because that's how it started.
Well, it's an agency, it's not private owned group.
No, sir, I'm not here representing a business that's trying to take your money. We're a group of local government agencies just like you, I'm a county employee, so that's what we're all about.
Leon, I'd like for you to comment on this if you can, because you know, you were here that day, the benefits of either Matt or Tim or Rodney, the benefits. The benefits of either Matt or Tim or Rodney, the benefits of being a part of this.
I mean, he's, he just explained it pretty well. I think it's something that we need to look at and, uh, go with. He's, they've actually been trying to get people down this way to join up for, what now, about three years maybe? We've had a couple of meetings before the one that we actually had the other day. And just couldn't get anybody to, uh, express any interest. I think the county's about ready to travel to look into joining too, so.
And, and keep in mind too, we're not wanting to leach off Marion County. In fact, like I said, the long-term goal is for you guys to start your own group. We just want to see other agencies outside of Franklin County experience the same thing we have. That this is an invaluable tool. Let me talk a little bit, if you don't care, let me take just a few seconds to talk about some of the ways we've saved money. And we have, we, we have capitalized on a return of investment that's exponentially bigger than our investment. After the tornado, we used the system to manage our recovery as opposed to turn it over to other agencies to manage. We saved literally millions by doing that. Our total investment on this system, counting some of the grants that we've received, is close to a million dollars. Just in that one event, we recovered that times about 15. Other instances, there's other smaller instances. For example, Hodges is building an equestrian trail. In fact, it's already finished. We sold them engineering costs because instead of having to hire an engineer, an outside engineer to come in and make maps of this horse trail that's over 30 miles long, we took, we gave them GPS, professional grade GPS units, trained them how to use it. And on horseback, they rode every one of those trails. And I took that information and built a map side of it. We have web maps now, we have printed paper maps of the trails. And two, when they were going to build a campsite, in order to do all the dirt work, they, the engineering firm needed accurate elevation models. We had those elevation models, we handed them over to the engineering firm. And all in all, they saved well over a hundred thousand dollars. Those are just some examples.
Matt, let's hear your, um, somebody.
About fire safety, fire planning.
Well, what we've, what we've talked with Michael about is, is he showed you, if he had internet connection on that Bellegreen High School right there, it would show exactly where all the power connections are, where the gas meters are, things of that nature that is basically right in front of you. And we're, we're talking about getting into doing the pre-planning here in Hamilton. So, you know, if y'all were to sign on with this, every document that we make about pre-planning for fire services is loaded into this system and available not only to us, but public. A lot of that information would be useful to them just in answering everyday calls. So it's not something that only the firemen can see, police department can see, street department, water department, whoever might need to.
And it would show water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, all that. Everywhere, water meters.
That's right. And some of that information's already collected and some of it will need to be collected. And Matt and I were talking about the possibility of kids from the hospital helping collect some of that information. And Russellville, we have had students in the hospital collect information about natural gas valves. So, and he said that there's a strong engineering and science profession here at the hospital. And perhaps it would be a win-win situation to give them some experience and a benefit to the city by having that collected. This is a page showing some of our maps that we created. One of the most interesting here is the water mountain festival. So downtown, we have this every year. We have dozens of vendor booths. We displayed all of those vendor booths and you can access this on a phone. So anyone there at the water mountain festival could type in hot dog and see where the closest hot dog station is. It also shows more important information like where the road is off to and where the first aid station is. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have. This is a sewer system in Red Bay. You can see the manholes and then how they're attached by sewer lines. They're color coded by diameter and you can see arrows showing the direction of flow. If I had internet connection, you could click on them and see all kinds of valuable information. There we go. I don't want to take up too much of the time, but I certainly would be glad to answer any questions.
I think it'd be good for us to be a part of this and expect the council to think about it.
Sure, take your time. And if you have any questions for me in the meantime, please don't hesitate to give us a call.
Is there information on your, your contact on this?
Uh, if it's not, I'd be glad to get it to you and you can distribute it to the members.
You'll get it to the outboard today?
No problem. Thank you all very much.
Linda Winters would probably be glad to probably be back too.
Linda Winters, absolutely, yeah.
But they're already using it, aren't they?
They are. They've been a member for a year or two now.
Yeah, she was here at that meeting right there.
Thank you all. Thank you, Michael. Appreciate you taking the time to come down. My pleasure.
Next one, uh, Jen has asked Renata to come. She asked me a few days ago about a proposal maybe for something downtown that would benefit our city and promote shopping downtown. So Renata, if you would just tell us as a group what you and I've talked about and, and see if there's something that we might can do to help come over to the city.
Okay, well, I did come on behalf of the merchants downtown. Uh, we met last week during a event for New Year's Eve. Uh, not New Year's Eve, it's Valentine's Eve. I've said New Year's Eve over and over today. But it's Valentine's Day, Valentine's falls on Saturday. And so we thought about doing something the night before downtown. But one thing, the reason that I've come is to ask the city about, um, funding, uh, of an event of, of carriage rides. We have called two different, um, companies that have the horse and carriage rides. And we thought that would be really fun for citizens to be able to do. Uh, we would charge, um, a ticket price to do that. The first company that I called was Allen, Alabama. And, um, he had a carriage that would hold nine people. And he would charge $800. He said he normally charges $600 an hour, for an hour and a half. But he could do the event for $800. Um, he wasn't sure. And so then, um, today, Wade asked me if I would come tonight. I thought, well, I better get a second quote, see if I can come up with a better price. And I did find a guy in Coleman, Alabama. His name is Gary Smith. I apologize, I don't have anything to hand y'all on his proposal or anything like that because he doesn't have an email account. So it's something that he'd have to mail in to us. But, um, he did give me a price of $550. It was 500 for the, um, services and then $50 in fuel. That's what he was asking for. And, uh, he is also insured with liability insurance. He did text me a picture of his insurance certification. That's all I have to give you, but we can get this information for you, you know, just by mail if we need to do that. His carriage, um, he said, "Aid comfortably." He said, um, "Nine possibly." He said, but now he has done, uh, the, in Birmingham, like the home tours. And he says where children have gotten it. He says, "We've, we've gotten as many as it'll hold." You know, with its small people that we can hold, you know, more than, more than eight. But, um, "Aid comfortably." He did send me a picture of it too, and it's pretty. It's white and it has, um, he pulls it with two white ponies. We think this would be a fun thing for downtown. We, we really enjoy the streets being opened and we've had a lot of success on the events that we've done, um, in the fall with our open house and then the housing trick or treat. But, uh, we have some other things planned, but nothing that requires, um, any money.
But do you understand that the paid this charge, carriage ride would go toward the indebtedness of the?
Yes, yes. And I kind of just figured out today, and I thought that maybe if we charged $7 a ticket, um, to ride and then, I don't really know how long it's going to take to make this big block. We thought about starting maybe here at Addie Jack's, uh, to beat the line and then let it turn left there at the, uh, in the middle of town, right there by Coffee Buzz. Take the left, go down past max minute mark, and then take the left, which would be this street here. Come all the way to the school, take the left and then back around and then stop to get at Addie Jack's. I'm thinking maybe 15 minutes that that might take. In three hours, I don't know how long that would, how many trips we can make, but I would think about, you know, 10 to 12 trips. But yes, then, then that money could be turned back into the cost of it.
Do you have any references of where do these people, companies have been before?
No, I, I do know, I just, I just.
Or within the particular, if I will, let's go on.
I have not.
Which could take on that.
The first guy that I talked to that was $800, he has a website and it looks really nice. This guy just was on, at when I just listed, when I searched for, um, carriage rides or rentals in Alabama, he came up. And so he didn't have a website, I just haven't named him. He said he's done like weddings, he sent me pictures of his carriage.
Excuse me, uh, the second guy, the, the cheaper guy, he is listed with the Better Business Bureau and doesn't have any complaints lodged against Hamilton.
Is this going through the Downtown Hamilton Association?
Um, I would think so. We, I mean, we just, just some of the businesses got together, um, last Thursday and met trying to plan. We kind of did it through the downtown businesses for the Christmas open house.
Anything that would promote downtown, and I presume it has been successful from the ways that you all have done and the community for later.
Scott, if this is going through the Downtown Hamilton Association and they're a nonprofit, will we need a contract?
We can do a contract and it may be simpler to do it, uh, straight up through with, uh, either one of you. Are you thinking the Coleman guy is probably the best bet at this point?
Well, as far as price wise, I do, you know, um, that's, he sounded really nice.
With that particular vendor, to bring, to bring them in, basically hire them to come in.
Just the city?
So the city's going to hire them or the, or we're going to contract with the Downtown Hamilton to hire them?
Yeah, that's what we, we always just think of. It may be easier to do it through the, or, or we can just contract with the Downtown Association and do it. But did I hear right, the money's going to the indebtedness?
Yes.
Whatever's collected for the rides and go back to pay the $550. Which really is, it should pay for itself.
It should pay for itself, especially if we do the $550. And then if it's, if we have, you know, what money over that, I don't know what y'all would want to do with that. We are doing another, um, a bachelor auction. That money that, that will be made on that is going to the charity for CIS, the Love for Others Charity. So if there is any money over the $550, I think it would be a nice gesture to, uh, include that into that charity. But certainly if y'all are doing hiring, that would be up to you.
Now this here, uh, you know, we, this year we get up to Chamber for, you can run this through Chamber. Chamber does stuff like this. Have you been to the Chamber?
Uh, yeah.
The Chamber, yes, for, you know, it just goes, it'd be a Chamber event. Is it just the Downtown Merchants, um, that you, we have to go through the Downtown Association through that?
Well, it has to be just the downtown, wasn't it? I mean, we don't make money the first year or every time it's a Chamber. In, in the past, when I served for Chamber and stuff like this, because we gave them money, right Scott?
But now there's a Downtown Hamilton Association. That's what Kenny came and told us about and there are five of one or something or another and.
Well, still, I can't understand why not the Chamber.
Well, if we did, we would have to include all of our Chamber members and include the whole city and all of our Chamber members in that. And these are just going to be just for this area here in Hamilton.
Our businesses are planning on staying open until 9:00 PM at night. I mean, it'd be great if the whole city went to.
I mean, like the whole town or be?
I mean, the host of town can come. It's not just for 10 businesses downtown. It is for the whole city.
Right, it is for the whole city.
It's not.
It's just for several.
Right. I mean, it's just lots of merchants wanting to do something, try to get, promote their town and get people to come to Hamilton.
Well, I think we need to include everybody in all this.
Oh, yeah.
Not just a certain.
It is.
How do you, how do you, uh, how are they excluded? I mean, how would you include them more than, than saying, hey, stay open and participate? We can't run the carriage down the Walmart, you know?
But they, I mean, the, I mean, it is for the whole city. It's just, it's just something that y'all came up with to try to promote our town.
Listen, when we had the, uh, the, the trick or treat, the, no, the Christmas sale thing, well, of course you've gone, you know about that. You've seen so many kids in town and, and people in town. It was, it was a great night for business.
Oh, it was unbelievable that, uh, the Christmas thing we did. And when y'all did the, uh, the thing for the, uh, trick or treaters, when all the merchants pulled together and gave candy, they had hundreds of kids, nine.
I don't think about 1,000 people that.
So, and you know, sometimes we spend money, but, and we don't actually get a financial return on it immediately. But, you know, down the road, it, it keeps an interest downtown. Right now, I think we've got maybe counting north of Vexer Avenue and then south of Vexer Avenue. We've probably got three or four empty buildings that are actually rentable. That's the lowest we've had and, well, since I've been in Hamilton since 85, you know, that's, that's a good thing. Anything we can do to keep, uh, traffic coming downtown and people interested, you know, is going to encourage those other four to be filled out.
And they're going to be filled. I mean, they've already plans of those being remodeled.
Yep.
The ones across the street from you. And, uh, almost every building downtown has got a tenant. I just thought it'd be a way, you know, have the broader city, Randy, I couldn't do it without council's approval. And I didn't know the best way to do it, but to get Scott's opinion and, you know, to see. Cause it's just come up last week and we won't meet again until the 17th, which is after Valentine's.
Exactly.
There's no way of meeting.
And plus I need to let him know in case there's another, someone else comes, contacts them.
I don't know who you want else around.
Well, I check with the webs, um, because they, they do have carriages, but they, they don't have any horses anymore that can pull those.
Well, I make a motion we participate in this. And what would that motion need to be included, Scott?
And who would you?
I think, right now, let's go with Downtown Hamilton Association and just put the money into downtown. And then they can contract with the particular group.
It's, it's called Smith Carriage Rides.
And they found out, and I think that's the, the simplest way and something arranged with the Downtown Association.
So make a donation to the Ham, Downtown Hamilton Association, probably at $550.
Yeah, we could do a contract basically for those services.
Yeah, it's not a donation.
I'll second where you, I think you could have him.
That's great. Thank you so much.
I understand you have a discussion. Paul, thanks, yeah. Thank you, Renata. I know y'all work hard promoting your down, and y'all, tell us about, you've got a new Facebook page for downtown and how many people on that?
It's called Downtown Hamilton, Alabama. It's just a page that, um, that we've created to keep people informed of what's going on downtown. We've had, um, I think we advertised for the Down Home Market. Had, they had open house yesterday. Toll Gate is doing a, um, an event for Saturday night of Valentine's Day, you know, Valentine's Night. You know, for a special for their couples and, um, just any kind of event that's going on downtown. We've got some plans for Easter and for Mother's Day. And then of course, our, um, appreciation is always, the downtown, the, you know, customer appreciation is always, I think, in. customer appreciation is always, I think, in June, so we've got some things lined up for that.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Next time on the agenda, some recommendations to win your business license for vendors after two thousand fifteen Jay Brown Ops Festival. John, would you like to speak on that, I think this is something we do pretty much every year, but tell us where we're gonna be this year, and a date, if you don't care.
Uh, it's March seventh and eighth, I'll come be in the, uh, Humpy Be Latre, uh, New Mountain, Alabama, by the county state, and, uh, we're excited about that, and, uh, we're, we're up just a little over fifty vendors right now, we've got a list coming next there too, a few more vendors in place. We'll be hopefully close to sixty vendors.
How many were average, John, this year?
Average, uh, yeah, fifty to sixty, something like that.
Do y'all think it'd be over this year, about what we usually have?
About average.
You're thinking about sixty members, though? And they, they will pay, Jan, they do pay sales tax, don't they, they pay the state, city, they just don't have to buy a business license for that in one particular day?
Right.
But they don't collect the sales tax.
Right, they have forms of the pack in there, artist pack, they'll have, and they'll form for sales tags, but, uh, cities and that's paid, tax tags. They're a bit, really quick on paying tax tags.
I'm there, motion. Second.
But land.
Land had a motion, is that what you said? Is all of them thankful?
Thank you, anything else, John?
I think the motion's going to executive session.
Okay, can we get to some other stuff and come back to that?
Sure can.
Let's go, since we got some waiting, um, we can come back, but that's the other side of the agenda, but let's, let's go ahead and go down and get, uh, these next few out in case somebody needs to leave. Uh, number fourteen, a recommendation to change our February sixteenth council meeting, that's due tonight, the President's Day. Those are a bunch of boy to change to the seventeenth. Okay, can, is there a second? I want you to say, I'm in favor, see how. What we can do also.
You said no for process day?
He says no, he's not to change the meeting.
What other towns do, uh, cities is, uh, every time there's a, if you have council meetings, it's regular on Monday nights, and you have a holiday, automatically rolls to Tuesday night, that way you don't have to vote on it, except for every time, if y'all do something like that, we can. We've had several meetings that happens to fall on Monday, and we always vote to change it, but if we, if we vote, it'll automatically roll to Tuesday, that next night, we wouldn't have to do this each time, we can think about that later.
I mean, Tuesday was proven, Lisa, I'm sure you've seen, I'm sure you've seen it proven, Lisa, I wouldn't have taken it.
It's just understood that, you know, if it falls on Monday, you're already off work, you don't need that night.
So you will not change the session, believe me?
Well, we are changing that, tell us, this next meeting will be changed.
What do you want your small vote again?
Yes, sir. All right, uh, number fifteen, a recommendation to replace the drop box at the library. A few months ago, we was in preparations to do the vote, we met, but it's far ahead and Star requested this then, and, uh, she's just not getting it back to, they have a copy of what it looks like in front of you, and we did put enough in her budget to have care of this. What she wants to do is replace the one that got, it's pretty old, been there ever since that building, and it just needs, uh, we really just need enough data drop box to replace that one, and this is what it looks like, and this is the cost, uh, forty-six hundred and ten dollars to, uh, cover that cost for that, and they very, very rarely ever ask for anything, so I thought it'd be good to put this on to be, uh, be considered if y'all would like to do this for them.
I'll make a motion we go ahead and do it, please.
Or we go ahead and make that lift gate deliberate. I don't know, land. I can find out if we'll need it.
Greg's made a motion, is there a second for purchases for?
Second.
Can you say? Any discussion? Paul in favor, see how. Larry, if you would come, I know you've been struggling, coughed, and apologize for being on the last.
I wrote the camera, I believe.
That's the way it was when we put the gin together. Larry met with me last week, and I got a proposal for you to finish your boxes, but I was gonna let Larry explain.
I want to see this on the. You got the page, I'm sorry, second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You got the page, I got that, I got that together, the first one, it says minor league field, we need some, uh, crowds control fences, keep it going by our handicap parking and, uh, and on the backside, keep coming with, we need that. It gives you two prices, a light gate and heavy gate, no need to put a light gate, it's not gonna set me in time at all, that's, write it down, so, that's, that's the first page, that's on, that's on the minor league and Dixie youth field. That will complete the handicap situation down there, okay?
This is, this is not for replacing this, it's y'all.
This is used to.
In between.
Right, in front of two fields, and on the backside, you think you were going in about a concession stand. And that's the problem we have, they just drive up there and get out and throw their lunch here and there, we're gonna, we're gonna try to have some kind, some kind of crowd control over the thing, so that's what, that's what we're actually need. Now, these prices are, uh, a pri, uh, from, uh, Kenneth Compton, and I'll have to get one more. The Ivy Fest guy did it before, and he was out of, uh, Tupelo, and he said that was, he would, uh, he wouldn't come back for a small flight.
When, when's the first one start, man?
On, on the minor league, major league, we were talking about this, it starts the last of March, okay? And, uh, this only, this is on the, the second page is on, uh, uh, the complex for the high school baseball softball, and they start the sixteenth. One starts the sixteenth, one starts the nineteenth, so we'll need to, need to work on it. All this is, is this crowd control, I'm gonna try to keep people out, out the edge, we don't want them, you know? The last page is the, to replace the fence down the road, that, that's strictly optional, the way I talk about it, we could do that, maybe another thing. That's the, if you drive down the road there, Smokey Berry Road, that's the fence is dilapidated down the road, that's, it needs replacement, but it, like I say, that's optional, that's not try, crowd, crowd control, those two things need to be taken care of. The company guy, I want to work the, the, uh, some of the projects downtown on the revitalization, am I correct to say that?
Yeah, he's the one we worked, did too, a couple of weeks ago, did the work at the water plant.
Water plant.
Replacing, uh, gates and putting all of that gates up, same company. So we're at least double gates, will be at.
One double gate's gonna be by the parking lot right there by the, uh.
Where you first come in?
It's a minor league field, the other double gate going down to the complex, down the road to the complex.
You got two of them here.
Two of them. One on the backside, on the backside, so we get them over there.
And then what that number two is, is gonna be the?
Uh, baseball field in the complex.
I'm talking about in this first sheet.
Oh, okay.
Number one is what, where's, where's that?
The chain, it's, it's a sixty feet going across the, the backside of the parking lot over. If you come around with a Buccaneer, come in that parking lot, we're gonna fix it with, come drive up behind the baseball field there. And the forty-eight feet's around about handicap parking right there, okay, and there's two gates. There'll be a walk through gate, go down the sidewalk, and there'll be a, a double gate, so we get them over there.
And that's the number two?
That's the number two, yeah.
And the number three, where you come in from, uh, Smokey Berry?
It'll be, yeah, come in, but it will be by the handicap park. Handicap park will be around here, it'll be on each side of the handicap park. All the thing will be open down there, it's the walkway. For people can't drive all the way in there. That's really the thing, that.
Man, if the council wants to wait the next meeting, that's, that's fine, Lee.
I'm good, I'm good, but.
If it falls in the first ballgame, it's gotta be done pretty quick.
We need to keep them off the rides, we need to keep them off the, we need to keep them away from the concession stands, or somebody, sooner or later, somebody's gonna get in. If we don't get it up, if we don't get it up in time, we'd stretch a good lot cross, cross there. Yes.
Yeah. How, 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 how long is it gonna take them to get in there and do this work?
This guy said he'd get right on, company guy, this. I thought, he was here, ma'am?
What, what's it, the baseball field needs to be done now?
Okay, we need it, we need it, we need the fence, and the baseball field down to the fence, and a walk through, it won't be, it'll just be a walk through, and a double gate right there.
Is there not gonna be a gate over, or any across where the new sidewalk kids coming?
Yes, we have a, we have plans, I don't work on here or not, man. Yes, a walk through gate, number one on that, on that, man. One six feet tall, six feet wide, walk through gate there, the, for the sidewalk.
That's going into the baseball?
Yes.
Okay, where's this ninety feet?
That, that's coming from the fence up there, down to the road. Taking, taking that old, uh, that old chain link, those, the old poles and chains up there.
So there's nothing on here to go across, going into the complex?
The two, the double gate, one six, double gate right there, number.
Okay, so that'll be coming from the existing fence down across where the, where you used to, where the road used to go into the complex?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I'm making a motion we go ahead and do that. Uh, number seventeen? Number seventeen.
This, which was at the second page?
Yes.
I'll second that, wait.
That's nineteen hundred and ten dollars?
That's the baseball complex.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, about.
Complex total, nineteen ten.
To come out of the red phone. That's what it needs to come out of, the red phone. That's up to you. Yeah. There's plenty of money there, but.
I'll go along with that, but I think we put the others up for sale.
We made a moment, who made a second?
We agree.
We're just approving the second page tonight.
I'll get him right, I'll call him, get it on tomorrow, okay?
Number seventeen, okay. Yeah, I got it, I got it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're talking about then.
We're tableing sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, that thing's one we both know.
Okay, y'all need to, y'all wanna make a motion to table that one, the, uh, minor league.
I'm making a motion. Land made a motion.
We need to vote first, right.
Okay, Paul in favor, see how. Uh, number sixteen, can we table that till we get some information? I'm making a motion to table.
Second.
Ten seconds, okay. By the next meeting, Black, we'll have.
I'll check, Cam, I'll see if we get material, too, what?
Yeah, see what.
All we gotta do, we have to take town, so, all the favor and change and table on that, number sixteen.
I'll get that name to you. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Larry. Before we, Cam, we're gonna take motion, go ahead and take session, I'll be back. I think John has already alluded to it, and tell everybody that's watching that, you know, Jerry Brown has been changing locations to Tom Deepy, and the very, very priesthood in them will allow us to use that facility, and it will be March seventh, and they, and we're trying to get a lot of motion of this. When you change from one location to the next, it takes forever, people realize, you move locations, and we've done that two or three times. So, in case we don't come back to take care of any of the city business. March seventeenth.
What's the purpose of the executive?
Tim, have you got a purpose?
Yes, uh, personnel matter. Personnel matter?
Phrase something.
Existing, existing personnel? Exi, existing?
Okay. You make a motion, Tim?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Paul in favor, see how.
Uh, I know. Well, third, one, two o'clock, morning. I, I make a motion to go back to the red session.
Can I have a second?
Ten, ten seconds.
Okay, here y'all. I've been making fun of my hearing.
You're not talking about now. It wouldn't wait, do you?
Yes, it was.
Okay, we're back in red session.
And I'll vote if it is.
Paul, I'm sorry, you got a vote, Paul, Paul in favor, see how. Any opposed? Thank you for keeping me straight on that. All right, we're back to red session, uh, we go back to our agenda, if you want to. Number twelve will be a recommendation to hire, uh, Cody Clark as a firefighter, starting February, it says fourteen forty, but it's supposed to, actually supposed to be fourteen fifty. I had it wrong, I got fourteen forty, that's wrong, it's fourteen fifty an hour, and this was, uh, this will be effective date, if he is hired, starting February fifth.
Well, I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
Is, uh, do we, uh, is he already qualified, or did we put, uh?
What we did was each, each volunteer that went, uh, that was not CPAT certified, went to the certified, and they, they passed. So he can be CPAT certified and be eligible to be a fireman, and all he'd have to have is four weeks of school, which will be ten, September? September.
That's what I'm asking, in the, in the police department, you put out things that all they post?
We didn't do that when we posted these, uh, these firemen out.
Why, why, why did we do that?
Whatever caused, we were trying to give, uh, a larger pool of applicants, especially volunteers that might want to be a fireman, have the opportunity. Some fire, some volunteers have more certificates than others, some would have to go to school twelve weeks, some with their certi, certifications would only have to go four weeks.
People that was, uh, already had their certificates already, were they, were they, uh, being a master's, I don't know if any of the rest of you knew any of the applicants, I didn't, I didn't say who was picking from, didn't, didn't say nothing. Just reading a master's, if anybody already qualified that could be hired without sending them to school, the way we did the police department.
That is correct, there is.
Well, I don't understand, we do one part, one way, one another.
That's just the way we posted that, when we posted the fireman, and by, and I did invite all council to come and have participated in the interview, and the only one that came was Francis, and we spent four and a half hours interviewing eight different people, and, uh.
Some of them sent for, for the list, and we never did get it either. You know, I'm, I'm fine with letting everybody be involved and get more pool, I should really not send that back to the police department, I'm just not, down to one person to come in, but, I mean, if you don't do it one way, well, let's, let's, let's keep it, keep it that way. I mean, if you could have some, after sitting here, that could come right to work, we wouldn't have to spend no money to, since it's good.
And I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying, if, if, if the council wants to be more involved in the hiring, I gotta have some help, I can't do it. You know, just manning supervisor, one councilman, then wait until the night, and try to hire somebody, and throw rents in. I mean, I understand what you're saying, uh.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna work on my own meeting night, I'm not in too big a hurry to get out of here all the time.
But, you know.
That's what, that's what we both, that's what we ran for, but, you know, we can't take off in the middle of the day, come up here, cause we all got jobs, Francis.
Yeah, but, uh, we, we started at three o'clock, and, you know, we could've started at five o'clock, we would've interviewed at ten. Like I say, we spent, uh, several hours going through these applicants, and, uh.
But it's just, you know, we don't.
I'm not trying to be on.
I didn't, I didn't, and I don't vote the rest of them, you are not, who, 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 who was hired, so tonight, walking here, don't even know nothing, I mean.
Tim had sent an email.
Huh?
Yeah, Tim had sent an email.
Did you send me one, Tim?
Yes.
I can get it.
I sent it.
Have I called it? I got the information, I heard the rest of, uh, guy won.
Well, I mean.
But I, you know, I, that's what I'm saying, I just like to be informed a little bit, instead of being blindsided when you come in here, huh?
Okay.
And I mean, I don't have a problem with Cody, I just, this is just a, a general question, he's not gonna go to school until September, is that correct?
That's correct.
So between now and September, what can he not do?
He can do everything, he's got a year to get his certification.
Okay, so he's good to get?
Yes.
One of them can go right, right to work.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are there gonna be any changes in schedules?
Uh, yeah, there'll be two on twenty-four hour shifts.
And, and any other schedules we work for these additional two?
This could be twenty-four or forty-eight, or?
Yeah, it'll be twenty-four, forty-eight. This won't be nobody filling in when somebody takes off, there'll be no filling in, except for Wednesday, if Matt takes off, then one of them has to just move over and cover his shift.
Okay, can you get us, all of us a copy of the, how it's gonna work?
Yes, sir.
Tim, I just helped with the interview, simply because, like you said, uh, I had the time, and, uh, but it is not my responsibility to hire or recommend, that's up to the supervisor and to the mayor, and I knew it when I got an email Saturday. So, that's how I knew. So you didn't know it any later, really, than, I mean, the email was sent out to all of us, I guess, at the same time, was it not, Dan?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I, I wish we could hire all of them, every, everyone of them, but, uh, tough job, got plenty capable, hope.
Well, the recommendations for Cody Clark on the first one, is there a motion to approve that recommendation?
I'm making a motion, we're approved.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Oh.
Who's that, no?
Uh, second recommendation is Mr. Kobe Whittington, uh, same fourteen fifty per hour, uh, starting rate, uh.
Fourteen fifty?
Fourteen fifty. And his start date would be February the ninth.
If approved. I'll make a motion to hire Mr. Whiggs.
Tim made a motion?
I'll say.
Timmy's second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Is there any other discussion before we adjourn? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you.